So tonight we have with us the Old Colony Planning Council, Lisa Sullivan and Lori Hudson-Boltz. We're going to talk about the draft Housing Production Plan, initiatives for housing, and a possible decision by us to approve the Housing Production Plan. Well, I need to say my chairman's statement about the recording of the meeting.
Go ahead.
Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording, which will be used to ensure an accurate record of proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in open session will be recorded. Do you know if Jim's coming? Has he said anything?
He didn't say anything.
Okay. Well, we have a board, so we can consider it, but I was just, I know Jim and Dan were interested in some of the zoning issues, so I was gonna wait a minute if they were becoming, if they're not, then we'll just get moving right along. So, you guys had come in, what was that, two months ago?
July 9.
July 9. And now, I guess, it's up to us to sort of talk about, have there been any major updates to the plan?
No, there's been, so what, I'll just give you like a history of where we came from. So, this was funded by, the town of Pembroke applied for technical assistance, and we worked with Ed Thorn to come up with what we thought would be most beneficial to the town, and we agreed that a housing production plan would be really a good thing for you to address. OCPC tried to work with Pembroke in 2012 to do a housing production plan, and kind of fell flat, just never got through all the, you know, you didn't finish what you needed to do, like approve it and accept it, so now they're only good for five years, so it would've been outdated anyway at this point. So, a housing production plan, you want one because it's a proactive strategy to letting you know, to determine what kind of housing you want in Pembroke. Because once you get to the 10% of the affordable housing goal, then you can say no to a 40B year, you can work with a developer and shape a 40B. So, the state would like everybody to be at 10%. And as of now, you have 614 units, you're at 9.52%, so you're really, really close. And then the 2020 census will come out, and we don't know what will happen, but we just know that you wanted to have a proactive strategy to keep up your housing units that are your regular housing units with your affordable units. So that's why we created the Housing Production Plan, and it includes goals and strategies to kind of maintain 10%. So, Lori and I drafted the Housing Production Plan in the spring. We sent you a draft in June. It included some public outreach, which was a survey. We had 250 respondents. We finalized, we came here July 9, and we did a presentation to you, and it included also a couple of brief presentations on things that we thought were more of the confusing types of topics, like inclusionary zoning, and the benefits of an affordable housing trust, because those are some things, people, towns, communities who are close to 10%, they navigate that way, in most cases. And then, we waited a month for your feedback. We didn't get any real feedback, and so then we reached out to Matt in August and said, hey, could we maybe move toward approval, a recommendation? Because the next steps for the Housing Production Plan is we need the planning board to endorse and recommend, and then we need the board of selectmen to endorse and recommend, and then we need your chief executive officer, Ed, to write a letter asking for approval from DHCD, and include the letters from the planning board, the letter from the selectmen, and the housing production plan. So that's why we're here, we're looking tonight to see if you would vote to endorse the plan.
So, the two things that we would be looking at beyond the approval of the Housing Production Plan would be establishing some bylaws around inclusionary zoning, right? Moving forward?
It's a goal and a strategy, and you're not tied into doing that.
Good.
Recommendation.
Okay, that's understood. And then the second piece was the housing trust piece.
Yes.
Could you explain that a little bit more?
It was just recommending that you set up an affordable housing trust, which is, it makes it easier to purchase real estate and to move real estate.
Okay.
Because real estate's so time-sensitive, and it allows, a lot of times, the affordable housing trust will leverage like CPC funds.
Okay.
The funds that are set aside for housing, and they might work with maybe like Habitat for Humanity or another nonprofit toward meeting your affordable housing goals, maybe doing a project. Maybe you have town-owned land that would be well-suited for either mixed-use development with an affordable element, and you might decide to, you know, donate, a tax title party, and then let like a Habitat for Humanity or like organization to a project on that, and you get an affordable unit on your SHI that way.
Okay.
So that's really rare, so it's like streamlined to the process.
And who establishes the trust? Is it done by the board of selectmen, or is that a planning board activity?
Um, no, it would have to be the board of selectmen.
Town meeting.
As well.
It's gotta be funded, and then you gotta vote to put the properties into it and money into it.
And even if you use CPC funds to fund it, you have to, it has to be a mechanism to do that annually, just like CPC funds to, you know, they put 10% in housing, 10% historical, 10%, correct? If you want to fund it, it has to be a mechanism to do that every year. So it's not just like cart-wash where the money goes over, but there's a, you have to register, you have to, and I have to go back and look at it, I haven't looked at it in a while, but I, yeah, you have to, things get filed with the registry of deeds, and there's a trust that's set up, and there's trustees, and, you know, that whole thing is set up through town meeting, and it's all reported, so. So again, that's a goal and a strategy, but you're not, by accepting the Housing Production Plan, you're not roped into any of the goals and strategies, it's just a plan.
Yeah, a blueprint.
A blueprint.
Yep.
For progress.
It was really comprehensive, and the work you guys did was really great.
Thank you.
You know, with the background and the depth of the information we have on the demographics, and the history and everything else, it was very helpful to have that in the document.
A little also fit into your master plan.
Yes.
We'll go into that later.
Right. Matter of fact, that could be the whole housing component of the master plan.
It could be.
Yeah.
Kenon?
Second answer is...
But I mean, just in terms of the process for master plans, which some of you guys have been involved with before, but I've had not to the master plan before.
You might tweak it a little bit, it's a little big for inclusion in your master plan as it is, but you can streamline it, the data's always the same thing. So cut and paste what you really want.
Yeah, the data alone is...
So it'd hold down our price of doing a master plan because one component is done.
Exactly. If you pull that in in your open space plan that you have on the shelf, you have the two big components.
Well, the goals are a big component, too.
Exactly.
And that's a huge part of the master plan.
Because we've been trying to figure out how to approach doing a master plan given funding constraints.
Well, dating it, I mean, the housing component's a pretty big piece of it.
Yeah, and you know, there's not a lot of interest in us going and asking for $90,000 or $100,000 to do a master plan, but if we could do one for less because we have components done, that would be a big piece of it.
Okay, so it'll last for 85?
Yes, we're talking about that. Some components don't change a lot, like soils and geography, and some of those components.
We can just update from before.
You just update, and a lot of your transportation things are already done through Old Colony Planning Council, so OCPC, and there's the ability to maybe ask for another DLTA grant next year and maybe get a section done.
Another section.
Yeah.
And just kind of work toward that, and then like...
And get the business development.
And then maybe it's $30,000 to have someone pull it all together.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm. So this is a big piece of it.
It is.
Has the board of selectmen reviewed the draft? Have they given comment on the draft?
They've had it since June. Ed said that it was well-received, and we wanted it to go through the planning board for your comments. We didn't want them to have the first bite at the apple because we're hoping that they will approve it.
Yep.
But we wanted you to be able to have your...
So your timeline is for you to get, you'd like approval tonight for us?
I would like approval tonight from you. I'd like you to, through Ed Thorn, to provide a letter saying that what your vote was and that you approved it, or didn't, basically recommend that for approval to them. Then they would go through a similar process. Hopefully, they'll approve the plan, and you'd both write letters to DHCD, which would be attached to the plan, and would be accompanied by a letter from Ed, and it would be sent to DHCD asking for approval. And then it would be good for five years. And it opens you up to getting more money, additional grants, extra points on other grants, like Mass Works and different things like that.
Now, the other thing was, I know that the board of selectmen after our last meeting with you guys was working on the number of affordable units we had in town, and there were some additional units that they found. Did we still only stay at the 9.52?
Brandon thinks that you're at 10, but until I see the updated SHI, which has to be updated, so he, what he did is he filled out some forms requesting new units, and he would've sent them in to DHCD for approval or verification, and DHCD will get back to him. I don't have access to that, and I can't see it in a system somewhere. So, once they get an updated SHI, you'll automatically, your units will be updated, and your percentage would be updated, too.
So how would that affect our housing production plan that we're talking about tonight?
It won't affect it at all. In fact, this is basically, you'd be approving as it is, and then what you're trying to do is make progress to the 10. So basically, we're saying you only had like 32 units to go. There was, we noted that there were some in development. In some of the units that he was talking about at the last meeting, some of the units are undisclosed locations, they're maybe group homes.
Right.
And so, they don't ever get disclosed, so we wait for DHCD to tell us that they exist, basically.
Okay, all right.
So they update those automatically.
But we wouldn't update the Housing Production Plan to reflect the 10%.
No.
It would be, okay, now you've met that goal, moving on to the next goal of trying to maintain 10%, given that we're gonna have other new development, and if we don't do something to maintain 10% as we get new development, we're gonna fall behind again.
Yes, exactly, because your number of housing units is based on the 2010 census, and as we all know, your number of housing units is growing exponentially. We just don't know where it's gonna come out in the 2020 census, so your affordable, the amount that you're gonna need for affordable units is also gonna grow. So what we were suggesting with inclusionary zoning is to kind of put the responsibility back on the developers a little bit, and let them help you with the problem. Because most towns are really not in the, they don't have the resources available to be responsible for creating affordable housing. You have limited resources, and you can help, and you can drive the process, but you, it would be helpful if, with inclusionary zoning, it kind of puts a little bit of responsibility back on the developer.
It makes it part of it, that if we're gonna approve the plan, that's fine, but we need you to help us see how this is, how you're going to help us.
Yep.
To build our affordable units at the same time, to keep up pace with the development that you're asking us to allow.
Correct, or also, if you, or if you want to allow regular developments with no affordable component, perhaps if you adopt an affordable housing trust, you might have an inclusionary, a bonus that they would pay into the affordable housing trust in lieu of creating an affordable unit.
Affordable.
So, that's how that kind of works, it's like a little bit of give and take.
Now, we've been doing that with the sidewalk.
We're just gonna say it, the sidewalk, yeah?
Yeah.
You don't have to build the sidewalks, but you, in certain cases, but you have to put it into a fund, or we can put the sidewalks maybe in a part of town where there'll be more critical to allowing people to walk around town.
Sure, that can be streets or whatever. I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have two sidewalks on a five-block subdivision called a sack, maybe you put on one sidewalk, or maybe it's no sidewalks if it's under four units, yeah? So we've seen that in a lot of communities.
So we already have that, kind of, the, our developers are kind of used to that at this point, the ones who work in town a lot, who come fresh, we explain the theory and the process, that if you want to build it on both sides, it makes sense for you, that's fine, but if you don't, because it is such a small subdivision, we'll allow you to put that money somewhere else where we can do it. Because every time you add to development in town, you add to the amount of congestion in town, it makes sidewalks somewhere else more important.
Correct.
And that's in our mind why it's not just holding up developers, but it's really, you're adding to the development, and so you have to add to the development in town, perhaps as a consequence, so it's kind of a, it's kind of a reason why we do it, not just because we can.
I have a couple of questions. Somewhere in the plan, it made mention of the deed restriction that there is maybe, I forget the actual wording, but it kind of gave me the impression that there might be a limitation on what deed restriction can be?
Usually they're in perpetuity, so forever, or for 100 years.
It said what's allowed by law, and I'm just wondering, what is the law? I know we had like several cases where we had about 15 years or something, and then units were dropping off.
Yeah, they don't want that anymore.
That's not like that anymore. I had a couple of those when I worked in the community of Bridgewater, and they, now it's into perpetuity. I think some of them originally worked for 30 years, and they would fall off. Even some housing authorities, if you look at SHI, some of their affordability expires, and some people are using their, I know, are using their affordable, their CPC funds to like repurchase affordability in certain, in units. You've seen in some towns, and they've done that with entire apartment buildings that used to be affordable, that were gonna lose their affordability status, so they've used CPC funds to restore affordability, or retain affordability into perpetuity.
Well, there's something called the rule against perpetuities, right? That says that you're not supposed to have a restriction on land that lasts more than life, and this is supposed to be years to pay, I forgot the, I know enough to read the rule when I need it, and it's like a 90-year restriction. So, when we say perpetuity, it may be like 90 years, there may be an outside limit on that, but I don't know if by statute, the rules regarding affordable housing allow you to bypass that rule against perpetuities. The other, so there may be something, but it's like 90 years, but there's a really long time horizon. But the other thing I've seen in deed restrictions is, if it can't be resold, there's no market for the affordable unit.
Okay, yep.
That if you can't resell it at that, at an affordable price, despite diligent efforts, then the deed restriction can come off if the housing authority or someone local doesn't want to buy it back at an affordable, or market it on behalf of the seller. Is there, are you still seeing that?
No, it comes as opinion on any of that before you go into those types of payments, because the law changes so frequently with affordability and the state's objectives.
Right.
So, yeah, we'd have to get counsel to look at any deeds that you write for these kind of units to make sure that they're...
Would we actually be writing the deeds?
Could be the housing trust, or it could be a vertical housing committee, it depends on each side of your organization.
Okay.
It's usually a regulatory agreement, it goes for units and fair marketing.
That's what I've seen, and that's...
And what I have seen in the past, is I saw, we lost a unit in my past experience to foreclosure, we lost an affordable unit, but it's my understanding that they've, that that doesn't happen anymore.
Okay.
The deed writers are much tighter, and that if you can't find an affordable, a person who qualifies, you could, this is the way I've understood it to be, is that you're able to sell the unit, but the restriction still stays with us, and the people are limited, they can't make more than 10%. So...
I actually, different deed writers and different plans, and so, yeah, I'm just not sure exactly what would be in the deed writer, what would be required by DHCD as part of an affordable unit.
So they approve all of them, and they all go to DHCD?
Right.
For approval, or if you have an agent, or a lottery agent or something, they would be working with. I mean, typically, it's not done in houses, it's not as much.
Yeah.
The question I have is, have you seen any towns set up maybe a rental unit, affordable rental unit use? So that when the, if it's, if a project goes in, and its use is an affordable rental unit use, to do anything else in there, like subdivide it down the road or do anything like that, would then be a change of use, which wouldn't be allowed, so it would all just stay as a rental?
I have, they usually have a regulatory agreement with them, so anything I've ever seen, like if it's a, from a 100-unit apartment to a three-unit lift, like a limited, you know, proprietorship where, you know, we allow three units, and one of them is gonna be affordable or something, they always have a perpetual or a very long-term deed writer, and they're going to remain rentals by the terms of the regulatory agreement. So, it's really pretty hard fast.
So without an agreement with DHCD, they could...
You can complement SHI, that wouldn't be counted on the...
Well, and without a change in the regulatory agreement?
Correct.
They wouldn't be able to sell it for anything other than a rental, you know, if one of the three is a rental unit, and that's under the regulatory agreement, they wouldn't be able to sell it to a new owner or change the use of it without some permission from, some relief from that regulatory agreement.
Exactly, yeah. So they're either, most of them, they're either owner-occupied or they're rental units, so you have single-family, you have, so they're supposed, you're supposed to like in a condominium, if it's an affordable unit, and it changes hands, it's supposed to be, go to an affordable, you know, someone who qualifies. It's not supposed to be like sublet or rented or any of those things. So there's a whole, you know, maintenance that goes, is involved in making sure that there's a checking balance, that these properties change hands, that's why there's the deed writer, so that when they change hands, they're gonna change, as the community is contacted.
So does that also work with single-family homes or accessory apartments? That's been the info.
Unless you have that particular deed writer with DHCD. You don't see a lot of the accessory apartments actually really being qualified as state child, because, you know, it's just the nature of the beast.
So it's weird, because we have it in our bylaws that you can do an accessory unit, but I think that what's happened is that the, no, either no one's done them, or they've fallen off the rolls.
No one monitors them.
No one monitors them.
Yeah, monitoring.
Right. So it would have to be written as a deed? It would have to be a deed restriction, but in most cases, probably not there because they've done it...
Their relatives, too.
Their relatives in many cases, or they've done it, you know, way into having bought the house, so not changing that.
Towns have such a, the accessory dwelling unit is, varies so much from town to town. I haven't seen, like in Bridgewater, where I live, you have to have an entrance from your house, you know, so you, it really is gonna be someone who is close to you, if you put in that unit, it can only be 600 feet, square feet, you know, so it's typically gonna be a nanny flat or a granny flat, or you're not...
So we have, we have two sections of our bylaw. One is a, an in-law or a family member accessory use, and then this, and that's restricted, the permit is just for that owner. And then we have an accessory use for, for an affordable accessory apartment, which comes with very similar restrictions as the family member, so I think...
Is that where, like we saw the 15-year limitation?
So I think that's what you're asking about, the...
My sense is that the CBA, you know, grants them, is it a special program for it, is it, but, you know, for the in-law, I feel like I see them grant those occasionally for the subsidized one or whatever it's called, but I feel like I can hardly remember ever seeing one of those.
My knowledge is only one.
Yeah.
There's only one?
So, to do that, you probably would need a, you'd need a monitoring agent to kind of follow up with those, to make sure the person's still qualified. The majority of homeowners, it's kind of a complicated process.
Yeah.
The fair marketing plan, and, so usually, you know, the town might say, when someone came before the CBA for the special permit, for example, and wanted to set up one of these affordable units, you might, you would require that they have a monitoring agent and a fair marketing plan, and maybe, you know, I think that like the limit, do you have a rundown, like revitalization or housing, the...
It's a corporate factor.
Yeah, something like that. They have an authority that does a lot of units that they market that.
So it's part of a housing production plan, you don't see that as being a major component of, I mean, it's a piece, but it's not, it's not what...
Maybe one or two units.
Right, it's not really gonna drive your affordability percentage. Is that something? Other question on that, though, if a homeowner did go that route, are they allowed to go out and find some themselves that meets their requirements?
That meets their requirements.
They are allowed to do that, though.
I guess it would depend on how you set it up. There's so few of these accessory apartments after it's set up. If you had it set up with a monitoring agent who has a lottery system, then you would go through the lottery, and you'd pick out whoever qualified during the lottery.
No.
But if you were a loosey-goosey...
My question is basically, all of, you know, has one of the accessory units that's affordable, do they get told by the housing authority who's gonna live next door to them, or are they able to oversee that themselves?
That would be, just like you said, around here, a little bit.
But then the question is whether DHCD would approve it if it wasn't monitored by a monitoring agent. I'm not sure it would get approval as a plan if it wasn't monitored.
There are a lot of hoops to go through.
But you can go, you can use a local housing authority if they agree to do it as a monitoring agent, and what you could do, I guess, is you could interview candidates and say it's a, you probably could say it's a, you know, if there's an affordable component, and then you could probably forward the information to the housing authority and say, could you vet this and see if this person qualifies? Maybe they could do that one, you know, so maybe it could be a two-step process. I mean, because even in big housing developments, people have to meet certain criteria. You have to be able to pay the rent to what you're in if it's affordable.
Well, I mean, part of, part of the hard thing, I feel like in the town like ours, is that, you know, we're not necessarily like some really high-end town, I'm trying to not pick on anyone, but we're not, we're not quite so high-end that we don't have affordable housing as a matter of fact, even if it's not approved housing. We do have smaller houses in town that are affordable, both from a purchase perspective and a rental perspective. We still have some stock in town, not a lot, but we still have some housing stock that is affordable in fact, just because of market conditions. You know, we have some small cottages, we have some...
Little cottages.
Yeah, we have, we have some smaller cottages that are still relatively affordable, that still would probably hit the criteria for affordability in terms of dollar value or sale price, or in terms of rental price, but they're not approved as affordable units, and they don't have deed restrictions as affordable units.
Yep.
So they don't count as affordable units. But if you compared us to some other towns of a similar size that are wealthier, they might have fewer places in town where someone could afford to live who was making median income versus Pembroke, where we still have an ability for people making a median income to find a place in town. And there are some towns where that's just not true at all. Like Bridgewater, I think you can still find some places in town.
We have, we compete with student housing, yeah.
Right.
Which is never, is not affordable.
Right.
Well, but it's...
But some housing in town, you've got some housing that's...
It is surprising to see some of the more affluent communities right there, 10%.
Yes.
Because they have plan.
Yep.
Right.
And they have an incentive to do it because of the cost of housing in those communities. So, you know, you'd be surprised at the names of many of the towns who have hit the 10% and gone above it.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is that we probably are above it in the sense of it's easier to find a place to live in Pembroke than in some of those towns that have hit their 10%.
But you have, you have constraints here that have made it, you know, you do have the, like we talked about SOWR, and you're still there. A lot of towns that don't have SOWR, it's difficult to get to because of the density, but you have the energy to do it, so...
And one of the things we started to want to talk about is whether it makes sense to try to do some sort of cluster, you know, as part of an inclusionary zoning plan, do we try to come up with something like a cluster? Because in a septic world, sometimes it's hard to find other ways to come up with affordable spaces to live.
Should be, with a lot of it, you know, more property in town that's pretty easy to build septic systems on.
Supposedly, septic systems are getting easier to build, right?
Looks good.
Septic systems are supposed to be getting easier to build in the sense that there are some advanced...
You're both right, but the cost wise, you're both right.
Just had a conversation with a health agent, not ours, another health agent, the other day about, you know, how they're able to put in some more advanced systems and avoid mounted systems, and even on very small lots, avoid tight tanks.
That's true. There's issues, a lot of that stuff, you have to be larger, you have to pay somebody to buy every six months or three months and look at it. There are issues.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm kind of going to fall onto my previous question. Let's say someone builds an in-law accessory, whatever that we've said is going to be affordable, um, can they move their in-law in there if they meet the income requirements? They have a retired parent and?
It's, it's, yeah, you'd seem to have a regulatory agreement. If you're trying to get that.
SHI.
SHI.
That's fine, yeah, we'll have the agreement, but they, they could do that.
Because typically you'd have to, I, I'm not going to say that you can or you can't because I'm not an authority I'm at, I wouldn't have to find approval. But I can tell you that in a lip agreement, typically like when you're doing in a lottery, if you were a developer and creating 12 units and four were affordable, you, your direct descendants or relatives would not be allowed to qualify for an affordable unit because usually that's written right there in the agreement. So an accessory apartment, there may be a different, whereas one unit, it may be a different, that would have to be approved by DHDB. We all.
And, and most people aren't going to do that. They're just going to move their in-laws in and move on.
Open up their finances.
But the incentive's not on the homeowner.
Yeah.
The incentive is for the town. The homeowner probably doesn't have as much, well, doesn't have any skin in the game on that issue at all. So there's no incentive for the homeowner to want to add to the affordability.
I'm just digging around here to see what's palatable and what isn't.
Actually Jim, sorry to, I mean, I think to answer your question, it looks like on page 13, um, one of the bylaws, um, it looks like it says, well, owners of existing permitted in-law apartments may apply for accessory apartments, special permit. So I think the answer might be yes.
Well, but whether or not you could have your family member live there is less clear.
Oh, that's true, yeah, that's.
But you need the special permit to do it.
So, under, on page 14, it says that the, you have to go to the housing authority or the monitoring agent to verify, to verify the lease meets all of the requirements and that it's rented to a person meeting the guidelines. It doesn't specifically say it cannot be a family member, but it, it just says that you have to go through the guidelines. And these permits are not transferable with the property. So every time the property changes hand, the permit technically goes away, which probably makes the houses easier to sell, but it also makes it harder for us to hang on to the affordable stock.
Well, it might make the house more valuable if it's got harmony.
Yes, no. I think it depends whether or not you want.
So you could decide to not rent it out, right? If you wanted to?
Right. But I guess it also, I think one of the things that it opens you up to is like, you know, if I had an in-law in my house for my mother right now and by forbid, my mother moved on, what would I do with that apartment? Could I get a special permit or something to, to then make it an affordable unit?
And according to our bylaws, you can.
You could. So I think it gives it a, a, like another use beyond what the current, what's currently, if, if that, if the owner wanted to do that.
If the owner wanted to.
Yes, one of the, I mean, one of the local builders was telling me that, that in some cases, they're actually building new houses with the sort of in-law apartments already in them, uh, just because I guess there's a lot of the demand for, you know, families where the sort of, um, you know, their parents are aging or various situations.
Where young people are staying. That's the other thing.
Yeah.
The young people are coming back after college and staying. And mom and dad want their privacy, the kids want their privacy, and it's kind of transitional housing for that, so that's, that's another tool in the toolbox that gets.
We haven't been able to sell this, so, you know, we have to go to two towns.
You're not, you're not committing, in all honesty, you're not committing to anything.
With the housing production plan.
Not the plan, but I mean, when we do some zoning changes, we have to be able to bring it to town meeting itself.
That's absolutely right. You have a lot, you can, you can research zoning changes, you can look at other communities, you can talk to other planning boards and zoning officials and see what works. You're not committing, you're not accepting this plan and everything that's in it and saying, we're going to adopt inclusionary zoning and we have an affordable housing trust.
It's just we're going to look at it.
You're going to look at it. It's a, it's a conversation, it's already been a conversation starter for you. You've all.
Well, it also opens us up to some funding sources that we may want to use to do some work.
To look at.
Yeah. House of choice funds, housing designation.
So I think it's something that we want to.
You want to pass?
Absolutely. Yep.
And then the conversation continues on what it looks like in the way of inclusionary zoning and hopefully we can reach out to you guys for some resources on that as we go.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I, I know that our grant has probably run out, but hopefully we can still call on you just as old colony planning council resources, right?
And we'll send you another application in December.
Okay, get some more funding?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do that.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the, um, housing production plan prepared by and presented by the old colony planning council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Standing? Okay, so we have, um, four of us here tonight voted in favor of it. So we would also ask Matthew to prepare a letter to our town administrator and let him know that we have voted in favor of that tonight and that will be, you know, we'll be continuing the conversation on our front and about the zoning and about what that really might look like for us, which I think is maybe a tougher step for us.
Thank you so much for your time, for reviewing our plan. We really appreciate it and we look forward to working with you on future projects.
All right, thank you guys. Thanks for coming in twice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So the next thing on our agenda is talking about the visual screening actions on, for the solar project.
So the brownout day.
But where do we leave that? Wasn't it just that we were going to ask?
I thought we said we're going to get some bids or?
We haven't gone beyond that at this point. That's, that's the initial one we put out, uh, several months ago.
Yeah.
We left it where they were going to get the bids.
Oh, Ed, Ed would have to give the bids, right?
Weren't we going to ask Ed's help on getting bids for that?
Yes. Bids on the fence.
He would have to do it, yep.
And then, and then bids on the, the mulch.
Matthew, weren't we going to ask for Ed's help on getting bids on the fencing and the mulch for the habermuck screening?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think we just need to give, um, their office a sense of, you know, exactly what we want them to bid on in terms of, out of our design or, or should actually specifications there and then.
But all we really wanted was to extend the fence.
We've got $25,000.
We have $25,000. We wanted to.
And roughly speaking, I think I've got, what, $11,000 in there?
But was that to the fence?
I think it includes 60 feet of fence and some mulch.
Did you give a, a price for somewhere on that?
The fence?
The fence, yeah, I've got to verify it, but I've signed that, what's your name? The original fence.
Other, yeah.
I took Mike's price of $42.50 or $4.
Cause that's going to be prevailing wage, right? Doesn't it need to be?
Well, it should be. Anything is starting on the town, so. Uh, I talked to, uh, Sonny Gendin and John's going to look at it. And I think we ought to go for 100 feet, I'd say 60.
Me too.
Well, just up to that, did anybody put a tape measure on it? Up to that trick?
Sixty.
Sixty.
It was sixty. It was sixty and you have to bend around, but I, I'd like to go for 100.
Just see where it comes from.
Yeah. But also I think you can probably vote based on what is there and probably vote for more plants, but I don't think the plants are doing good.
Where would we, I was thinking the plant's further down on the road, you know, for that gambit, right?
Is it going to have any, no one's going to worry?
Right.
It, it's, it's got seasonal foliage there that's going to be there and continue to fill in, and there's not much we're going to be able to do about winter time anyway.
So, so if we do 100-foot fence, to just extend the fence 100 feet and mulch in front of, we clean it up and mulch the fences, that's really all we want to do.
So I'd probably look to spend it for a year.
Okay, so let's get the bids out of there.
And then what do we do with the rest of the 10 grand? Do we have anything else we want to do to beautify that, that area?
We may need to replace the fence a couple weeks.
I think we need to keep it for that purpose.
I guess we have to.
We're going to run out of time if we don't do this fairly soon?
Yeah, yeah, I think, like, you know, whatever we have.
Let's leave an option there that we can always add your fence if we want, because then you go 20% over on bonding.
Yeah.
So, so can we ask Ed or?
Go 120 over on bonding.
To, to how we would bid.
On a unit price?
105th fence, clean up all of the area along the sidewalk there and add mulch to make it look prettier so that we have a nice finish to the look. So even though you're looking at the solar field, you have a nice finish.
Yeah, it's all neat and tidy.
It's all neat and tidy.
I'm just afraid 100.
So 100-foot stockade fence.
But then cleaning up all along the sidewalk so that, you know, that area looks neat and tidy.
So the section between the sidewalk and the fence.
What we want is 100 feet of fence, but we also want a cost per, per foot after the 100 feet, because we may decide if we get extra money or kind of how about the price comes in at, and you say, okay, do 110.
Yeah, we might do 110, 120, because then we might loop it a little bit behind the brush, right?
Right.
To give a visual screening to the solar.
If you want, you could just do 100 feet with some mulch, is that what we said? Some mulch with that sidewalk.
That slope right across the driveway to clean that out.
Yeah, clean out the slope.
Yeah.
And then put down some mulch in the area where you're cleaned out essentially.
Yeah.
So that things will grow or, or just it'll look good and.
I, I can't remember if, if, if there was an area that didn't have room for mulch, but we just want to clean, it, it just looks messy.
A little fucking fucker.
It looks like it was left kind of unfinished.
Yeah, I'll talk to Sabrina or Ed and, um, you know, and they, I guess we'll compare something and write, I guess, that describes or, I mean, some sort of a.
Well, the key is we don't have a bidding process really. I mean, we're not, we're not the procurement officer. And so we just want him to act as procurement officer to give us 100 feet of fencing along that road to clean up the brush along the sidewalk and to add mulch along the sidewalk. And someone could put their proposal, you know, that involves so many man-hours of cleanup, so much mulch, so that we can compare apples to apples.
We really don't care. We just need to know what it is for 100 feet and then for each foot thereafter.
And, and assume a, a quantity of mulch and, uh, a quantity of excavation and then get a unit price for it, then we can add some bid.
Um, what do you, Dan, in terms of mulch and cultivation, how would you phrase that?
Yeah, let's just text it. I, I can talk to a few people, you know, independent from me, local contractors and just get some figures.
Well, no, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of how we would word the bid.
Well, it's.
Standard grotting.
Clean up overgrowth and mulch.
Clear growth, remove grub. Clear, clear the grub is the standard.
Term for, yeah. Pre-clean-up.
And grub, cleaner?
Clear grub, yeah.
Clear and grub.
Yeah, grub, yeah.
Clear and grub.
Well, how kind of clear? Just go to.
Well, you are between the side and the fellowship, sort of fence is actually going.
You don't want clear.
Well, then just the grass, the high, tall grass.
Strip, strip the room and they put in.
Of course, we might put in tops.
Okay. So that's, so we want to, we want to have 100-foot fence and then a pricing per foot thereafter. We want to clear and grub the overgrowth between the sidewalk and the fence and add mulch to that area. And we want to, I think not just between the sidewalk and the fence, but also to clear the overgrowth from the sidewalk, um, from the next 100 foot of the sidewalk, let's say. That the, the growth, the overgrowth would be cut back and there'd be mulch between the sidewalk and the mound for the next 100 feet as well.
You mean that, that the next 100 feet beyond the fence?
Yes, yes. So between the fence and the sidewalk as well as past where the fence is, just clean it up. Don't add a fence, don't add a lot of growth, but just clean it up.
Just that slope on the backside of the sidewalk, yeah?
Yeah. Just clean it up.
Clean and mulch.
Clean and mulch. Clean the overgrowth and mulch. Okay. So Matthew, we're going to, so our next thing is reviewing administrative matters. Our next board meeting is scheduled for September 10. You guys are going to have a hard time coming, just let us know so that we know if we need to move anything. We're going to have an executive session on September 10 that'll be noticed, um, regarding, um, 24258 Oak Street. You don't want to go into litigation there, um, so we're not going to talk about that tonight. Matthew's on vacation for the week of September 17th to 21st, so if you meet him, try to get him before then. So we're wondering whether or not we should, if we have a board meeting on September 10, our next board meeting would then be September 7, 24. With Matthew out of town, it can be logistically difficult to get a meeting that night?
Well, why not? Why don't you pass it up just another week?
Well, that's the question, should we, um, have it on October 1st? October 8th is a holiday anyway, so we typically wouldn't meet the second Monday because it's a holiday. So maybe instead of having the 24th, we have it on the 1st and then, and then, because we're going to skip the 8th as well. So don't have the 24th and the 8th. Are we available?
We have three meetings in October?
No.
Depending on how busy, I mean, probably not unless October 1st is being, you know, incredibly busy.
Probably the 1st and the 15th.
Okay. I mean, we don't have a lot of stuff going on.
Not right now.
Okay.
Yeah, that always could change, but at least for, yeah, the next, looks pretty slow in the, the next month and so, I mean, we could, I mean, we certainly could do September 24th, but it is a bit awkward to try to do like right after my vacations because then I have to sort of post to general, like, oh, we can have 40 and things may change while I'm not there. So I think October 1st is more of an easier.
Well, we're going, there's no issue why we can't vote on the 1st.
Yeah, I think we need the 1st.
Yeah, that's right.
Do we need a motion for that or we?
So we have the 1st and October meeting on that Thursday.
Is the, is the 1st and the 15th or the 1st and the, um, 22nd?
You mean for October?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess.
22nd is today, 4th top meeting is next.
I think that's correct, yeah, I think the town meeting is October 24th.
3/7/88 for 100 feet of fence. It's not really going to be expensive.
Those installed.
I've got 42. I've got to call.
All right, so we're going to say October 1st and what's the other date we have in the calendar right now?
Well, so the next one is September 10th and then after October 1st. I don't think we need to decide right now. I mean, I suppose generally say on the 22nd, but I, I would suggest, you know, not decide.
As for top meeting, those, we usually like not do the Monday before, the 1st and the 15th.
So the 1st and the 15th, I think is what I would tend to probably schedule if people are looking to put things on our agenda.
Sounds good.
The 1st and the 15th. Okay, so the 1st and the 15th. We have minutes in the, in our file for July 30th and August 13th?
Yes, installed.
Okay. So do we have? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for July 30th?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then August 13th, I wasn't here, but we've been told that we can vote on them even if we weren't present.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know that we need to delay this. It doesn't look like a particularly difficult set of minutes.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for Monday, August 13th, as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't abstain because I...
You're going to abstain?
I think we're okay because we have three voters, yes.
So we're good, okay. Dan and Dan signed the final drawings for the Wolfstand. Are we done with that? We have another extension request. The developer of Dominic's Way subdivision at 56 Gormav in Pembroke has submitted a letter requesting an extension from September 4th to October 4th for the application review for the subdivision. We finally got revised drawings to Peter, who's going to do his review soon, so we should be able to vote on and sign the final conditions of approval on September 10th. So for now, the only question is for us to grant the 30-day extension. Do I have a motion for someone to grant a 30-day extension for the subdivision application review for definitive subdivision number 1801 entitled Dominic's Way and located at 56 Gormav from September 4th to October 4th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The clerk needs to sign building permits for Bryson Way extension subdivision. We've already released the law, so we'll let Tom sign those. So apparently...
I guess you just need to vote to have Tom sign them.
So I'll make a motion that we have the clerk sign the building permits for Bryson Way.
Do we have a second? A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Okay. Planning board members are being reappointed as special municipal employees and that allows you to still take part in dealings with the town on non-planning board matters because you're a special municipal employee as opposed to a general municipal employee. There are still ethics issues and conflicts issues that aren't waived by this, but it is a different category. It's a little bit less restrictive. In order to be deemed a special municipal employee, there is a advisory, there's a reappointment form in here, you need to fill it out and leave it with Matthew tonight or else you will not be reappointed as a special municipal employee and you would be deemed to be a regular municipal employee for complex eventual purposes. So take a look at your packet and leave it with Matthew.
And I guess to the best of my knowledge, there's no disadvantage to being a special it just, so.
We also have a question on ordering new assessor's maps for fiscal year 2019. We've always done it, not always, I don't know, but always, but we've done it in previous years. There's a form in our folders about ordering the assessor's maps. It's $75. We have money in our planning board office budget. Matthew finds it very helpful to have the assessor's maps and so we're asking for the board to authorize us to order, how many sets of maps? Do we just get one set, Matthew?
Yeah, just one. And yeah, they're helpful to have, so, you know.
Okay, so can I get a motion to order a set of the assessor's maps at a cost of approximately $75 per map using our planning board office budget?
Now, that's typically, the assessor's maps come 18x24?
Yeah, they're those big, those big ones there. I think 32x24, yeah.
But there's what, like 70 pages?
Yeah, it's a lot of pages, yeah.
Okay, so it's not per map, it's per...
Exactly, yeah, for the whole, for the whole thing, yeah.
She says per map and we mean per set.
Yeah, we always have them and they're very handy.
And it does say, order one set of maps.
Right.
Okay. So am I off, so I'm looking for a motion to authorize me to sign this request.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think she knows. So the recreation department's Manichees at Ballfields project site plan expires October 14th. The site plan's deadline for completion has been extended many times since it's a long-running project dependent on town funding. Do we need Susan Roche to come before the board to request an extension or did she just submit a written request to extend it for a year? And my recollection of this project is that they'll take on pieces of the project to accomplish the site plan, but it's not something they can do in the usual two years we refer to on a commercial app. So do we want her to come before the board and explain the status or do we want her to file a written request?
How do we get that request? Just, how do we get the request from her? Just verbally or an email?
So far?
I think, I mean, I think, I think two years ago, she came before the board and then I think last year just submitted like a written request which she signed. I mean, I don't think it can be verbal, I mean, it's...
Did you talk to her this year or did she send an email?
Yeah, I just talked to her like a few weeks ago. I just, she just happened to be here, so I mentioned it. And then I think she's, you know, willing to come before the board if you want to. I don't know if it's really necessary.
Is there anything to talk about though?
Yeah.
No. I was just saying, if she sent an email, consider that the request and go ahead and grant it.
And go ahead and grant it.
No, nothing yet, yeah.
Rather send a written request and...
An email would be good.
Yeah.
Does she have any plans that you know of, Matt? Do you know anything else down there?
I believe she still wants the extension, so yeah, I think she's still, that's fine. And I think, I think from what she said, it is kind of gradually moving forward. Like Becky said, I guess, it's just a question of taking it sort of chunks at a time and as through the town releases.
So Matthew has a new nameplate. Matthew, can you show us your nameplate?
Oh, yeah, after two years, I finally got it.
It took two years, okay, go ahead.
Well, I mean, it only took, once I ordered, once I finally ordered, it took about a week, but it took two years to order one.
So, so we need to order a nameplates for our two new members. Matthew had asked if we want to order them for all seven members. I don't see any reason that we have to all match.
No, no, we can, we can make them like these.
Yeah, I think, I think it's normal.
Yeah, I think two is probably fine.
As cheap as we can.
Yeah.
Just order them.
I mean, unless you want them more, unless you want them all in that.
Just as a FYI, we've talked to different points about the fact that there was going to be a billboard along Route 3 and the ZBA did grant the request for variance for that billboard and it's, then it, only one can be granted by Mass D O T within a certain space of each other and Marshfield was also working on granting it. That was actually going to be on our side of the highway, but Marshfield land, that's on the Pembroke side of the highway.
So we'll get the money.
Oh, that's a little...
But we wouldn't have gotten the money, so we'll see whose board gets approved by the state or by the develop, by the...
We'll still have to wait for that.
We'll still have to wait for that.
And I just got an email actually from the planning boards at Marshfield today, I think it was today, yeah, asking if it was, if it was true that we had approved it or Pembroke had approved it.
Everyone's kind of pushing to be the first because only one town is going to get money out of this. And either way, there's going to be a billboard in that area.
Just tell them it's a bill.
Yeah, right. We were asked to, to submit to KP Law an administrative record of proceedings for the Oak Street site as part of that ongoing litigation with Matt, which Matthew did. So on the updated map of the town-owned land and open space that we've discussed, Matthew is going to try to create this map instead of having Peter do it. He's trying to learn how to use the software to do it in help.
Actually, so for that, actually, I just talked to the guy today at G I S and it's a little different it turns out.
So we can't do it?
Well, I could if I took this training, it was like $1,500. But it sounds like they, the guy there can do it for about maybe 200 bucks, 100 or 200 or 300, somewhere in that range. And wouldn't, but it wouldn't be the map, but it would be, I mean, it's kind of hard to, I don't know, basically they could add a layer to the, to the G I S that you can do on the web, which in some ways would be, would actually be better than the map.
Yeah.
But then you could do...
That's kind of what I was suggesting.
Yeah, we've been talking about trying to do G I S.
It really would be more, and then potentially you could make a map case off that, you know, in future.
So that's, that's going to cost about 300 bucks.
I think at most, yeah, I mean, that was my essential talent. And so I talked to Kathy and we'll talk with Bob Clark, essential, what sort of areas he wants to show.
You're going to have that work, sure.
So the only other issue for us tonight is this issue of how possible changes to the zoning bylaws and how we want to begin to talk about those or look at those. Matthew, I, we had an email from you about a list of items to look at there.
That was a good list too, by the way.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't have it in front of me.
That was helpful, right, yeah. Now, this is sort of a lot of items. Well, I guess you are, you also have a list. You know, we may, the planning board may decide to only address, you know, one or two of them or a lot of them or other things. So this is just kind of a starting point, so, you know, so don't be intimidated.
This was, this was good. This was really helpful, yeah.
But thanks, it's sort of the result of, I guess, two years of kind of being on this job and kind of seeing, you know, some things that are just sort of like things I don't think would be controversial, we should sort of ask KP Law to fix, just sort of more housekeeping technical stuff and I don't want to agree. I've also got, even I want to see these, but this thing from KP Law, which was actually for the, kind of in relation to the litigation, where basically Carolyn Murray was kind of saying like, you know, we should, you know, that kind of, there's a bit of a contradiction that we should just, that would, it would be good to sort of go ahead and kind of rewrite just to clarify with regard to like whether, whether a site plan appeal goes to the ZBA or to the Land Corps, whether it has to be within 20 days and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, some of this is just cleaning up some stuff and making clear some contradictions.
Well, there's some of them that are a little more aggressive though.
Yes, I think you could put them in a couple categories.
Right, right. Like, for example, the, the, the business B lot size, that's probably a little bit bigger issue.
Yeah.
The used variances, whether we would ban used variances, I think is a bigger issue.
It's a huge issue.
Whether we want to go back and look again at multifamily mixed use or assisted living in center of town or elsewhere, that's a big issue.
Yep.
Accessory dwellings and whether we could design them in a way that would help increase our affordable inventory, as Jim was talking about tonight, that would be a big change.
Yeah, but I'm not sure we'll be able to accomplish that with accessory dwelling. That's, I mean, we could talk about it again, but it's very tough, I think it's very tough to do.
The thing we don't have on here specifically is other ways to achieve exclusionary zone.
Right, and that's going to be, I think, something we want to talk about. And that's where you're talking more about some, we use the word cluster, maybe some zoning changes in town. And I think we want to look at, the special permits is a huge one.
Do we want to fix the...
Use variances.
Would we do smaller lots in some areas of town?
That's the question, yep.
If the soils, you know, in one area 10 or one area 10's higher, could we justify smaller lots that could still be easy for septic?
My thought was to, you know, just to give an opt to, you know, Board of Health regs and the Wetlands Protection Act and all that stuff and what you could possibly do to leave it as flexible as possible is come up with a limitation of the number of bedrooms you can have per acre. So it could be one six-bedroom house or six one-bedroom houses or whatever works, but it would allow developers some flexibility to work with that particular piece of property.
Yeah, I think we want to do a lot of diligence on that one.
Yeah, so how are we going to move forward on that one?
Well, did we talk about having a subcommittee get together and look at some, some of these things?
We did.
Well, I did, number one on their list of the production plan was that we do zoning for that would be put together based on a joint committee from planning, I think every, every town department except Animal Patrol. So I thought, I saw that's probably a good way to make sure nothing will ever happen.
Yeah. But you may, but with that issue though, you may want to have, you know, the health agent, Board of Health involved with it.
Right.
Right? You may want conservation involved with it because...
I think Board of Health, they don't have too many regulations that would be hard to deal with. Most of their regulations are based on where groundwater is, what the soil is. It's not a lot of like you have to be, the law has to be this wide, we need this much frontage and this much area and stuff like that.
But you know that's how, how acre zoning or close to acre zoning is justified in general is based on septic requirements, that you can have greater density and not end up with septic problems. Because otherwise, our zoning would be exclusionary zoning, that would be hard to uphold.
Yeah, I don't, you talk, it's called the nitrogen loading requirement, that's, but that's, that's when you have wells present. That's usually four bedrooms per acre.
Four bedrooms per acre, meaning there's a well present?
Yeah, in a certain distance of the well. It gets more restrictive if it happens to be a town well.
So there are a lot of issues involved in that.
So are we just saying that that committee will be formed according to the housing production plan, so that issue we don't necessarily have to take on?
Well...
That committee will take on.
Well, I, I, I think we want to be very careful about that and we may want to take a leadership role in that area because we, we are the zoning.
We, we are the ones that write the zoning.
We write the zoning.
Well, the zoning has to come before this board for a hearing before it goes to town meeting. Regardless of what committee develops the zoning, just by matter of law, it has to come back to us before it goes to town meeting. But I would hate for a committee to go through a ton of work on this and then it come to us and we raise all these questions at the end.
Correct.
Because that's not fair to anybody who's doing the work.
That's right.
I always hate that in any committee process.
It's, it's why, you know, trying to get the right parties involved is so important upfront because, again, the committee can do a lot of work and exactly what you said, so. Well, I think people are involved.
Yeah.
You get, you, you gain, you know, you benefit from their knowledge, you benefit from...
My thought was that basically, if you do do something with zoning, I mean, you have to follow Board of Health anyway and you have to follow the Con Health Wetlands Protection Act anyway.
Is there like a state template to get started with this, like a round zero?
On exclusionary or on, in general?
In general, for the zoning bylaw state templates that you can like start.
So I have a Westlaw template, like a mass practice series type template.
But unless we want to go back to drawing...
Unless we want to go back to square one, it's hard to start with those templates because...
Sometimes it gives you a fresh look on, okay, where did we go astray over the past 20 years?
I mean, I guess we could look at it, I could send it around to the board just so you can look at it and see, are there things in here that we haven't even thought of or considered?
Well, also, we don't, you know, we've got a list here, we can consider two or three of them, you know, I think...
At a time.
Yes, because that gets things done. The worry about a template is you start to reorder the way it's done, right?
I understand, but I...
Language stuff and it gets, you can get bogged down in a lot of legislative language.
Somebody that hasn't been in it, like myself, hasn't been in it as long, like you've seen the transition, you know, me bringing it new, I just get what we have and it'll be interesting to see where did this derive from.
Which of these issues would you guys consider would be most...
Some of them, some of them look like they're just almost force with them and stuff like that. Some of them, some of them look like they're just almost force with it and stuff.
Business and those lots, there's going to have to be a discussion. But on the business B...
Well, you know, you may also, in some point, some of those lots may be a lot smaller than 80,000 per foot. And it's residential commercial, we don't see a lot going in there, right?
And that could be a problem because we want it to be kept up.
Right. So...
Is it serving our interest to have that required?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Have you had to issue many variances?
Well, we can't do the variances.
Well, it's just business B too, by the way, it's not the other zone I was talking about, but you might want to look at that also.
But yeah, the ZBA has issued a lot of quite different variances for that, just because, lack of belief for the Irving Hall.
Oh, I thought that one had 80,000 square feet, I think, I think it does, doesn't it?
Well, it had something else that was a fan issue.
It didn't mean 80,000?
Business in those lots, there's gonna have to be a discussion. But on the business B.
Well, you know, you may also in same point, well, those lots may be a lot smaller than 80,000 per foot. And it's residential commercial, we don't see a lot going in there.
And that could be a problem because we want it to be kept up.
Right.
So is it serving our interest to have that required?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Have you had to issue many variances?
Well, we can't do the variance.
Well, it's just business B two, by the way, it's not the other one I was talking about, but you might want to look at that also.
But yeah, the ZBA has issued a lot of quite different variances for that, just because lack, I believe, for the Irving Oil.
Oh, I thought that one had 80,000 square feet, I think it does, doesn't it?
Well, it had something else that was a bad issue.
They didn't need 80,000? I know they needed variances, but I think it was our.
But definitely for some projects they had, just because for, you know, most of the parcels along, you know, 139 are, you know, they're all across, so they're just less than 8,000 square feet and it's hard to assemble a few parcels together.
Well, and I guess part of my question there though is what are you gonna end up with a lot of tiny little, like people turning the residences that are on a 40,000 square foot lot into a business? And is that what we want or don't want? Is that gonna create like a chop a block feel to that street as opposed to some kind of cohesive development where, I mean, I think one of the things we run into sometimes with the smaller developments is we want to, we wanna make things work, but sometimes do we end up not getting things engineered as well because it's a small, low project and we're trying to bend over backwards to make it affordable? Do we end up with less sustainable, less desirable business development in that district if we reduce the lot size? Because the projects are so small they can't afford the engineering things.
I think we gotta, I think we gotta do it, at least we give it the opportunity to try it without variance. We can't really reduce this.
Well, not like when they go for the variance, they don't get it.
If they wanted to build their 40,000 square foot lot by next door, I'm gonna make it faster.
But I think that's what we thought in the past, which is, but that's what happened with Irving Oil.
You put a couple lots together, you can do a project and then you can do a project that's a nicer project.
There are a fair amount of small businesses along that corridor.
That you could do in a house.
That they are, you know? You could do your, you know, dog roving.
Well, part of what we've done is we've made it so it's hard to take a house and convert it without it being owner occupied.
It's gonna take a place and increase them, so.
Is it really?
Well, they don't require site plan because that won't be doing anything, set up shop.
Well, and when they do a variance, that, I mean, the one thing that makes the downside of getting a variance as opposed to having it come through the site plan process is if it doesn't fit, then they go get a variance, but then they don't necessarily come back to us for a full site plan.
Unless they require it to, you know, put in a parking lot, you know, raise the roof up and expand that building, then that triggers site plan, they come to us, but if they just have a use.
Just get a variance.
And they set up inside.
Plus it's hard for like the dog roving person to buy that house next door and have 8,000 square feet.
It's expensive.
Yeah.
We keep small businesses out of town that way, we're gonna end up more in big bucks than small businesses.
Or the sneaky end of the rate out ones, you know?
I really think a business on the one acre lot is not gonna be that obnoxious, and I do see your point about having curb cuts all the way along, but I think that's gonna be regular by Mass Highway.
Well, you got it for driveways now.
Can you already have a driveway curb cut? Do you need a new curb cut now, right?
Um, possibly if it's a business.
If it's becoming a business versus residential, they require a new permission?
But it's no medical use, you see it.
If you change the method, you need to go before Mass Highway, like, so if you've got 12 foot driveways and you wanna put a 24 foot entrance in, you've gotta go to Mass Highway.
But are you gonna do that at a 40,000 square?
No, no, I would say.
Probably not, no.
Well, if you're gonna get enough parking in there to make it really viable, I mean, part of the problem is that if you can't get a site plan, you can't get it sort of worked at as a, as a business, people are gonna have people parking in what is supposed to be like four or six residential parking spaces as opposed to like laying out a little parking lot in the backyard.
Yeah, but they may only require four or five spaces for the type of business they have, they may have a, you know, a schedule business, like a business therapy business.
At least it'll be properly drained, you know, everything kind of matching in a tunnel if they gotta go through the planning process.
Well, that's a, that's, yeah, it's a big issue, you don't wanna deter them. So I think it bears looking at, there may be a, there may be a nice middle ground.
So this one looks, this one we take a little more discussion.
And we may, and we may just leave it the way it is too.
And then scenic roads, that one I think is pretty easy to just mention it, so people see it.
Well, we have it, but it's in the town bylaws, is that correct? Is that, I thought?
I don't know, maybe it's in the town bylaws, I don't.
We've never been to find that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, you have to go back to the, to the old annual town meeting reports to actually find the documentation, is what I did, and so, I mean, I've got, I've got a list of, I mean, I got a list here.
So we should add it.
But, you know, for the average developer who's looking at our zoning bylaws and our rules and regs.
So it should be added to the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I see that as only administrative line of, yeah, we should clean it up.
Yeah, possible.
The difference between the zoning map and the bylaws text, that sounds like a bigger project. I have to say that the assessor's engineer mapper, there are things on the assessor's map that don't match land court maps.
Who else?
My house. Exhibit A.
That's the last of the property.
No, but my point is if it's, if it's true there, I, I, no, I've been at other houses where I'll be showing a house and I'll try to look at the map and the assessor's map does not match reality. And then if I go through it, I'll see that there were other changes done along the way and so.
A lot of people feel that way depending on their tax.
This is just like, the assessor has the line going through the house. So, no, it really just doesn't match, and especially if it's land court, the maps that are in land court are different from the engineered maps that get filed on the court side. And so that's, it's with registered land that you see a discrepancy between the lots in land court and the lots on the assessors, and I don't know that we've really gotten to the bottom of that.
Isn't that more up to the assessors to straighten out than it is us?
Well, yes, but if we're trying to somehow fix the zoning map and the bylaws text, I would raise that with them at the same time.
Well, again, I don't know how much of a problem we have with this either.
I guess my question is who pays for this?
Well, whose problem is it?
Yeah, that's true, I mean, it, it hasn't been a big problem, I mean, it seems like potentially legally it could at some point become a major issue, but so far it hasn't been a, you know?
It hasn't been a problem for us.
Well, don't we have something on there that says that the zoning bylaws govern? That this is for informational purposes, but the zoning bylaws govern? I think we have a disclaimer on there.
Yeah, zoning boundaries are positive, please refer to the town of Punggong Robson Immortals.
Yeah.
For precise boundary locations and descriptions.
Yep, and I don't think that a surveyor would rely on those zoning maps, right?
I think we can take that off the list.
I know the assessors are upset about this though.
But it's their problem.
We would work with them and be, we would cooperate with them if they considered a priority that they wanted to fund. Does that seem fair?
Yeah.
So with use variances, we've talked about this at different points in time, to your question about zoning bylaw samples, in some zoning bylaws, they actually ban the, ban the giving of a variance or a use restriction. So if an area is zoned residential or commercial, the, the ZBAs would not be authorized to give a use variance to say that you could put a commercial building in an area that's zoned residential. And part of the theory on that is it avoids what effectively becomes spot zoning, at least town less vulnerable, and it creates more cohesiveness that if we want to change uses in a particular area, that should be part of a process that involves town meeting and it involves an actual change to the zoning bylaws. But that may be hard to get through.
I think this is gonna be very important both when we start coming up with new zoning for like the cluster or inclusionary or the accessory.
That it can't just be waved away.
That suddenly it's, you know, we put it in there as a cluster zone, but then suddenly someone comes back 10 years later and decides they'd like to be straight residential. Go for, go for mental apartments to single family.
With a use variance.
With a use variance.
Another issue may also be, you know, we've rappled a little bit in the past with what's in a home business, right? And the difficulty was in listing all the home businesses allowed in residence A.
I think we came back, but basically we said professional is in there.
Right, but the definitions are hazy.
So I think having professional in there is fairly, that's fairly clear.
Fairly inclusive?
Well, we had a couple of other uses in there that were specific, that was the issue. Like TV and radio repair, yeah, there were some.
I mean, but sometimes what you can do there is say, rather than requiring a variance, is you could say these types of uses require a special permit.
Or are allowed, these are the things that are allowed, and that's what we say in the.
That's what we say, no, yeah.
I mean, I think we've had a bigger issue in this when it comes to like multifamily or mixed use settings where the whole.
As I said, if we do something and go forward and do some inclusionary zoning, that.
Or if we add back in some multi-use or multifamily in the center of catchall districts and other areas, can we, can we get everyone to agree on what that should look like and then stick with it?
Yeah. And if you cancel, we change the use down the road after we've gone through site plan and gone through everything, yeah. I think that's very important though. What's the selling point though?
The selling point is that, that everyone should have to live by the same rules, and that if we come up with a set of rules that govern areas in town and people wanna change those rules, that we as a group change the rules and not just a one-off changing the rules for someone who might be someone's friend or might have a particular story as opposed to for everyone who falls into that same category, that it's a question of fairness.
What we could also do, maybe Matt can help us with this, but we have years of ZBA decisions, but you would look, you'd go through them and categorize them to see where all the variances are happening, and that may tell you where to go with the zoning bylaws where we need to make some changes because they're constantly asking for variances there, which means that it's now become really part of the zoning, if you think about it.
Which is what I think he was suggesting, business B lot size.
They've already set the precedent.
They've already set the precedent, because they've got, they've given the variances, because that's what people are looking for and that's what people are looking to do.
But then we should go ahead and change the bylaws so everyone can do it, because sometimes there's people who will push for it and there are other people who look at the bylaw and say, oh, I'm not entitled to it, and those people end up getting.
And if it's happening anyway.
Treated less fairly because they're following the rules, the people who follow the rules best, they treat it the least fair, fairly.
So we may wanna look at that, and that would at least give us, you know, a direction.
And then we can say, look, we see these use variances happening all the time.
All the time.
So we can adjust the bylaws to address those, but then anything else that needs to happen should come back.
If you've got 10 years of data behind you, it's fairly easy to convince people it's been going on for 10 years, right?
Okay, but how is Matthew gonna have time to go through 10 years of?
I'm not, I'm not, can he do that, can he do that in a short amount of time, but there may be a way that, maybe we could find, you know, some help for him, you know, hourly help that would be able to go through and identify.
I mean, I don't need to read the whole thing, you just need to read what sections.
Right, exactly, and you could, you could do it by the sections of the bylaw that are being, right? And then you put them in piles and you'd have some good data.
I think, honestly, I think most of the variances that they grant are single family lot situations.
Non-performing uses and someone wants to build a deck on.
And they're really looking at, is this situated in such a way that it's gonna cause a problem for the owners?
Yeah, and a lot of them are, are existing non-performing situations like around the bonds and stuff, or there's situations where we probably wouldn't wanna change, like, you know, maybe a person.
But I think, no, I think you're right, if you look at residence A, since you may wanna take those out of the equation and just take a look at what's going on in the other business zones where those variances are being, because that's really, we have our issues mostly.
Yeah, unless somebody's getting commercial approvals in residence A, which I don't think is happening.
No, we don't care about, we don't care about the setback variances for a shed.
Right, because that tends to be more unique to a circumstance.
Or to a lot, or to a lot, so I think we'll wanna look at the other zones.
And in fairness, I don't, I mean, I think our ZBA, at least in the two years I've been here, I can't remember them granting any use variances.
Is that per center street?
Was that a use variance or, I mean, I think, I guess it kinda was use variance, I guess, yeah.
Well, it's restricted uses.
Or at least they, they changed the percentage requirement, I think in terms of the center, but I mean, they, they rarely do some variance, so, you know, the one, it's hard to say which ones come up often because it just doesn't happen that much.
So I think it's.
But one would, I guess one would be the issue of the, the 80,000 square foot in a lot size and in business B, that one kinda has come up on several occasions, FBS communications. But probably if I look through the, you know, the old paperwork, I might find a theory where I'd be like, oh, yeah, that.
Do we have a file here of all the ZBA decisions?
Yeah, so I keep a file, at least inside the year of their decisions. I mean, they're, they're kinda lumped with the notices from other boards as well and stuff, and there might be some Maryland might have got the possible.
So maybe we need some more data so that we can justify whether that needs to happen. And then the next one, a mixed, make multifamily mixed use center assisted living and possibly increasing affordable housing to achieve our, our affordable housing goal of 10%. Or maybe just to, again, you know, there was an idea at one point that the mixed use would allow the development of a walking residential commercial district in the center of town, and we got rid of it, and we did say we would revisit it once we got through things, so I think that's, that's part of the bigger question that we have to really. And whether we wanna subcommittee or we wanna find time to kind of present ideas to each other, how do people think that that's gonna work, massive formal subcommittee, informal discussions, they come back to the board of suggestions, how do, how do we wanna really handle that?
Well, are we gonna drop the square foot requirement for business B? Because I think if we, we would probably wouldn't do that.
These two go together?
Yeah.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Because those are bigger issues, like business lot sizes.
I would hate to, I would hate to something drop it to 40,000 and then something added mixed use again, and then have like a whole bunch of stuff that we didn't really intend.
Right, well, I could see though where on some of the business B, you could have a rental unit and a business coexisting there, a small business, you know, like a, like a grooming shop or a PT office where it's not owner occupied, and we don't really allow that. And I don't know if that's bad.
So is that allowed in the center now? It was for a while and then it wasn't.
It's not now.
It's not now.
Well, anybody who's already joined it is already allowed, but it's currently not allowed.
Why do we get away from that?
Well, originally the theory was that maybe they have, the first floor is maybe a business, the second floor is maybe a small apartment.
That's how life looks.
What happened was everything that got built was residential and no businesses got built.
And so we got rid of it.
So it wasn't actually mixed.
So we got rid of it until we could relook at how we put in something that's enforceable, and part of it was maybe we put it back in, but we put it back in with a provision that you can't have variances to allow a different mix.
It's an awesome concept, like as a business owner, like my situation.
To offset your.
Well, well, not so much that, it's if someone's there, you know, with the right fit, it's.
That's why we need to get the use variance. Get rid of the use variance, because that's how the mix was getting changed, those.
I think strictly speaking, they weren't getting use variances, they're just getting a variance of the percentage, because they were still, they were doing it as mixed use, you know, as for the, the use of mixed use, they're just getting a variance to allow for like, you know, 90% residential instead of.
That's like a mixture for use, so I guess we have to figure out a way to tie that so that what becomes. So I guess we have to figure out a way to tie that so that what becomes the, the design, and I do think on this one, we need to have a conversation with other boards and make sure that it's not just us sitting here saying, this is what the plan should be.
Our developers, what, what's, I mean, I think we try to get them to build what wasn't meant to sell.
But what if what they say is what's going to sell easily?
Right.
Because there's what's going to sell and what's going to sell easily. And throwing up condos is going to sell easily.
With their confidence in trying a new thing.
But, but the residential guys don't have the experience in developing commercial. And so they're not necessarily the people who understand how to create a mixed use.
Well, we also don't have the properties available for, for a sizable mixed use project that would attract someone who's experienced at it, right? They're generally looking at much weirder projects.
Unless you were doing it across Route 3 maybe, or in the Business B area.
Or along Washington.
Or along where the, where the community center is today, but that's a big parcel of land, it's the last big piece.
In the center.
In the center.
Yeah.
And a good chunk of it's in Residence A. And a part of it's historic and then there's the Center Protection District.
We also could just allow possibly more multifamily in certain zones, possibly.
That, that would probably.
Well, it already happens.
Well, except for the neighbors who then have to deal with the increase in traffic and the idea that if you have too much multifamily in town, it detracts from the.
But that's what we see in the beginning.
The value.
Right?
I'd like to see us move a little bit more to like cottages duplexes and stuff for that versus single family and.
It's all multifamily, I mean, probably condos on 53 that have gone in, it's all multifamily.
Yep. Which is kind of a shame because they don't have anything to go to on that street.
Well, apparently they don't care.
You've got a derelict.
Except the game park there. It's interesting though, because there's, there are, I'm trying to think of it and I'm trying to think out loud, but I think I want to consider it more because if you just allow, like what if we just say you could do more mixed, multifamily throughout town? I see towns around us where they've gotten very densely packed in with multifamilies.
But there, there tend to be the affordable option for people in many cases. And it's, it's a lifestyle change too, and the market's obviously robust in that category. Like they build them, they sell them. There's some market desire.
That can have a huge impact on your town services, right? I mean, now you're, you know, if, does the increase in taxes on a three-bedroom condo cover the cost to town services for that three-bedroom condo?
I don't know, no one's ever been able to.
It's unclear.
To quantify that for me.
You know, the big if is if you come out with a lot of like, say, studio or, or two bedrooms, a lot of people will sell a four-bedroom and move into it, stay in town. But move from a four-bedroom to a two-bedroom or a studio if they retire or something like that. But now you've, you've opened up a four-bedroom. So it's very difficult to actually analyze it because you don't know who moved where and what they left behind when they moved into something else to the upside, to the downside.
But look at, look at 227 Street, those, you know, you say people are going to downsize two-bedroom, they're large two-bedrooms, but it's still a two-bedroom and the price points are not really, the price points of these condos are not. They're up there. They're not really designed for, you know, we don't have, we don't have a lot of inventory, a studio, a one-bedroom, a small two-bedroom for people who really want to downsize to something that's in the, you know, $250,000 range.
I know what people tell you, that they don't, that the one-bedrooms are not marketable. That's what they tell you, whether it's true or not, but whether the path of least resistance is a three-bedroom, two-bath condo, that may be the path of least resistance and the one-bedroom condos may be a little tougher.
But there's nothing in the $250,000, $300,000 range that's going up around here.
Uh-uh.
It's just not happening.
No.
And the question is whether you could.
And that's for the affordable ranges, right?
Well, I think for people who are going to downsize and be on a restricted income, yeah, that's, so, for example, there's a, if you have the median income of, for a family of three is around $70,000 in our area, and if you have that median income, an affordable unit, affordable unit for that family size, for that, for that income level based on what, what you'd have to pay for your mortgage based on current interest rates.
Twenty-three thousand dollars.
That was, that's what was missing out of the report. It never actually said.
Well, because it changes so much.
Yeah.
So I just got a, I just got a certified sales price recently on an affordable unit, it was $234,000.
Yes, how many bedrooms?
It's a two-bedroom unit, but that's what a family of three can afford to pay if they are within the.
Eighty percent of the median.
Eighty percent of the median. If you're within 80% of the median, which is generally what counts as affordable, but it varies, like that changes from development to development and depending on what gets negotiated, it, it changes, but that's kind of a standard.
Yeah. So it's up to about $52,000, $53,000 a year in income?
No, $70,000 a year in income for a family of three.
The median, I thought she said, you got the 80%.
Oh, 80% of the median is 70.
Okay.
For a family of three.
Family of three.
And so that leads through this calculation to a cert, to a sales price of about $234, and I'm sure those numbers vary from place to place, but that gives you kind of a sense of, we're not building affordable housing in general. Just by making it multifamily doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be affordable.
I'm saying if a developer was able to put four of those units on an acre, that might start to get more lucrative than your standard single-family house and they might get built.
In other words, if I could take an acre and if I agree to make them affordable, I could fit four, four small ones on an acre instead of one big house on an acre, would I be more likely to build it?
You'd have a tough sell.
Well, the one big house.
Tough sell for the zoning change or tough sell to a developer?
I don't know about, I don't know how the economics would work out, but I think it would be a very tough sell on the zoning change.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
That would be a.
To say if you have a lot that could support six bedrooms, you have a choice to do one six-bedroom house or?
Well, that may be a, another way to kind of position it.
I mean, the carrot is that we, you don't have to worry about a 40B one, we don't.
I know, but that.
Where there's no control at all.
I know, but it, it still may be a hard sell because people look at the 40Bs and go in and say, ah, that's a real.
This would be better, I would like to think.
No, I don't think it would, it would be worse.
Oh, I see what you're saying, they look at, they look at something like off of Bird Street and they say, those are nice houses.
Nice houses, that's great.
It looks like a nice subdivision. It's cluster zoning, basically. It's not zoned, right? It's a 40B, so it doesn't have to be zoning, but it's more like a cluster development in that the houses themselves tend to be smaller lots closer together and then a lot of open space. There's a lot of open space in part because there's other types of land there.
I think what they would worry about is the, through the 40B, you're going to have enough acres to build enough units for it to be.
Spread out.
And spread out. Where you'd be worried about your next door neighbor selling out to a developer, tearing down a house and putting four units in. It may be a, that may be a tough sell.
Yeah, I think you get a lot of, I think you get a lot of.
I mean, not that it shouldn't be looked at, there may be another, there may be another solution, but that may be a very tough sell, so.
Hard every change.
Unless there's a part of town where we're getting multifamily requests, like 53 or something, where this might be something, rather than expanding the amount of big condo developments, you could have smaller little clusters of affordable houses.
If it's something by special permit, then it's still a public hearing. People get to come in and voice their opinion versus a 40B where they don't even get to have an opinion.
Well, but with, if we get to the 10% too, and we have a production plan, we're better positioned to actually negotiate with the developers on 40B.
Well, but in 2020, we're probably not going to be at 10%, unless we do something between now and then.
But we also found, and the ZBA has adopted some more rules for 40Bs, that, you know, we weren't, we didn't have anything before.
Right, so we have a little bit more control.
We have a little bit more control and there's ways to also get some, you know, money back from the developer, get some fees that we can incur if we need to.
And then we can build some units and take care of some issues.
Well, that's where you may have that Affordable Housing Trust, and you may be able to do something with that type of fee.
So we do have a lot of town on land that we could use.
We do have a lot of town on land.
That's guaranteed.
I didn't think there was a lot of town on land except that school lot on 53.
No, West Elm Street.
Where in West Elm do we have a ton of town on land?
That was a development, development that.
Land that can be developed easily is North Pembroke.
Where?
North Pembroke Elementary School. Just like we develop the school property and then about 50, 60 acres around it.
Really? That's not already used for fields and things?
And then there's other, you know, you think about the country club, you know, it would be a golf course forever.
Isn't that right behind the high school?
Yeah. It would be hard to get to. Yeah, it's still maybe hard to get to. The elevations change dramatically behind.
That's, yeah, that's, you know, there's a lot of wet process stuff.
Yeah, presumably the elementary school kids, they don't need like a lot of fields to run, like that's more the high school kids.
That is okay, a lot of weight up there, huh?
Where? Can you point it to me? Jim, can you point? Oh, okay.
Yep.
You probably couldn't do too much because the access would be off of those residential streets.
Well, there's already an access to the school.
Off of the residential streets.
Which is wide, as wide as the subdivision road already. Yeah.
Well, the thing, so what you're talking about is not building a huge development of condos so much as something like what you're saying, which is maybe smaller.
Be owned by the town, probably owned by the housing authority.
Everyone's always afraid of having more housing authority, units that are not over 55. Like people don't seem to have a problem with over 55 affordable units.
Actually, no such thing as these, when we put back out of the storage area, so you could potentially have an access to go a little more through. Probably by the shuering range.
No, the shuering range is not the one, right?
Oh, you're talking about, he's getting all the shuering range there.
Well, that the, of our police, of our police was.
They still use it?
Yep.
Okay, so that's a bigger question. And accessory dwelling units is sort of a bigger question too. So on the, on the administrative questions, I think we could ask Matthew to talk to K Law about proposing some drafting on the site plan appeal confusion, on the addresses on the sign, on just the basic point of having the 12-month period brought into performance with Mass General Law.
The guy I'd look to before I forget it again.
Yep.
For the site plan, the requirement for that.
Yep.
We still have a situation where if someone's taking up residence in the cemetery, they need site plan approval.
Why?
Because you're putting a man-made structure, a wall to build around. That, that clause is just way too broad. It says if you're doing anything at all, you need site plan approval.
But I mean, in practice, has that really been a problem?
It kind of has because, well, not so much as, well.
Early on it was more of a problem. That issue.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
What triggers, what exactly triggers site plan?
Is this, are they going to do site plan for this new?
Because we've, we've done, I mean, we've triggered site plan for an awning meeting today.
Right, we needed to kind of like lax it, or just decide what we really want there.
Although I feel like sometimes building permits go for sites, for changes that I would have expected site plan approval on.
Yeah, I've seen a couple in town.
I have a couple in mind.
That I was a little shocked that they didn't go for site plan.
Right, and it really, there were sites that weren't great that maybe we could have gotten some improvements out of if we had triggered a site plan review. So that's always a tough one for me because we certainly have the ability to say we don't consider it to be a, we consider a minor modification of an existing site plan and will approve it without a full set of hearings, right?
Yeah, sometimes you're told people you don't need a site.
Yeah, you just, you just vote, I guess, sort of to waive their apartment with site plan, like for the guy who probably, I don't know, when Jim did sports or something, built a tiny little porch, or when the guy built a new, you know, like a, just a tiny little canopy, it was really a terrific thing to do. Which I think makes sense, I mean, those are definitely, thanks for the note into a full site. But it's always good to at least reserve kind of the board's discretion, I suppose, that you can.
Aren't you supposed to, starting asking us to add this up? Aren't you supposed to start asking us to?
Okay, so how are we going to bring this forward? The ones that required more discussion, are we going to have a, we've talked about a subcommittee, is that really what we want or do we want more meetings like this?
This was good.
I think this is great, but, you know, we took a lot of time.
Yeah? We don't usually have this much time.
I know. As a matter of fact, I was about to attempt to make my motion.
So, so, so some, some guidance from you guys, what do you, what do you think we should do?
Let's try to take care of the administrative ones.
First?
Yeah, and we have plenty of time to take care of the other ones.
Yeah, yeah.
Our hair is on fire.
The thing is we go a long time and just we forget how we left it. So I feel like we made a ton of progress tonight. And then four meetings from now, we'll break this up and, okay, what do we say?
Well, to that.
Matthew's taking the.
Well, to that.
Pretty good job of reminding us, et cetera.
Yeah, that might be helpful if you want to update.
Yeah, that would.
Will Matthew update this?
Oh, Matthew.
Let's basically put some action items.
What Andy's suggesting is that you update the list you had sent to us with sort of action items from tonight. You take the list we were working from tonight and put in what the board said tonight into this list.
Okay.
Yeah, and then that would, because you're right, we tend to forget what we said, just like the.
It would be nice if you, Matthew, you've got notes.
Can you read? No, he's taking better notes than I have, I think.
My editor is pretty terrible, too.
I don't think he's great, but.
Oh, before I forget, Matthew did look up for the health, what the requirement is for wells. They do require all wells in town to be potable water and be tested.
That's right.
So you can't do like, you can't do a straight irrigation.
Well, you can have an irrigation well, but it still needs to be portable.
Yeah. But I think that'd be, I don't think we could force that on the developer. How can you force someone to have potable water in a well?
I think that's a huge asset to make it a piece of property of love.
So the question is whether the Board of Health would ever reconsider that with respect to converted properties.
It doesn't cost that much more than.
Yeah.
Well, it can.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying we can't, we can't force someone to put in a well because they may not be able to.
Or at least not.
Because whether a property is buildable.
Right.
Well, what is the point of it, why somebody goes and drinks it, a guy knows it's a.
I think it's more to make sure that everyone's. That water.
Well, no, that's why I'm wondering whether they would consider any variations to that rule in the commercial area where it's clearly going to be used by maintenance personnel.
Just like you've got corporate park and with a irrigate, it just looks so classy and clean.
It's possible to allow them to, I guess Matthew's checking Board Health and see if they'll. I think they probably would, certainly, except for.
Tom, I'm waiting for your motion.
He doesn't want to go on record as making a motion.
All right, I have my motion.
Here's your second.
All in favor? All right. Code?